Thank you. Roll call, please.
Larry.
Here.
Hany.
Here.
Harvey.
Here.
Hawk.
Here.
Pauline.
Here.
Pierce.
Here.
Chris.
Did Beth answer?
Uh-uh.
I think that's her number up there, so.
I thought I saw her number, but.
That's Mike.
Okay, alright. Um, moving on, we have the meeting minutes from the Finance Committee meeting of January twenty eighth, twenty twenty one, and the regular council meeting minutes of January twenty eighth, twenty twenty one. Are there any errors, omissions, additions to those minutes? I have one. Um, Marta, I, I don't know where it, where it resides, but um, in the stack of legislation that I signed and the last, the meeting minutes before that, I um, submitted a letter from the mayor regarding the Income Tax Review Board and Mark Dickis's appointment. If you could include that, or if, if uh, we can't find it, if Sam could get that to you, just including communications for our next agenda, please. Any air, any others? Hearing none, those meeting minutes will stand as approved. Next is audience participation. You would like to address the Ironton City Council, or you to do so now. I can't see all of you, so you may have to. I think you're muted, Chris.
Yeah, I, I have one, uh, once again regarding zoning. Um, zoning issues, any question? Um, Dave Wallace uh, is questioning a house on uh, ten twenty four South Fourth Street. Um, he seems to think it is a Suboxin, uh, the Boxin prescription distribution house. I guess that would be a way to call it. Um, and he wants, he would like to see if, if we could look in um, to the business in that house. Um, he doesn't think it meets the requirements to be in that, that zone. So I've got.
Did you give the address, Chris?
Ten, four.
I know, I know.
What is it?
I spoke yesterday.
Okay.
But I'll write down the address, though. I know where.
Yeah, ten twenty four South Fourth, I appreciate it. I told him I'd uh, I'd get it in the, in the meeting minutes, uh, so.
If I could add to yours, Chris. When they first started moving in, that was um, I think Dave Wallace's parents' house, and they bought it cheap at an auction.
Yep.
And he'd, he'd come to me and we talked about it, and I mean, I, it does look like typical type house they use. When I say that's because, you know, that's four blocks above me on Fourth Street, and I go out that street four or five times a day going to the tool rental. And there's, there is most of the houses have certain cars you get used to seeing them, like Holtzapple's house running out the street from them. Always the same vans or cars sitting there. That house is always has different cars, and they're always ninety-nine percent of the time they're parked the wrong way. They pull over, you know, they don't stay on their side of the street, they pull over on the curb side of the house. And it just looks like it's just not very well maintained, and what he's saying about being a Suboxin distribution thing may be why, because you know, when you deal, it's a, it's hard to talk about sore because you don't want to be talking bad about people. But you know, it seems like people that's doing that or using it, they don't have a lot of respect for the law, and they just pull in there any way, shape or form, and it really creates a, a driving hazard. But Mayor, if you said, I think I heard you say you're already been looking, talking to Dave and looking into it. Is that correct?
Well, I just spoke with him last night, so we will look into it.
Well, like I said, I'm by there half dozen times a day. And I would, I would suggest
if.
A little bit. Talking to me. Okay, I would suggest that maybe you could have the police keep an eye on the parking, because even though whatever they're doing there, they'd need to follow the guidelines and the law on which side of the street to park on and how close to the corner and you know, that, that would be a start if they thought somebody was watching.
And in regards to that, Bob, Dave also owns the driveway that's next to the house, and they park in that driveway illegally as well. That's, that's not part of that house, it's part of Dave's house. Um, so, and originally, originally before, I, I didn't know any of this about the Suboxin, but it takes, it takes all the emotion out of it. Um, when, when it's a zoning issue, because it's not zoned for that, it takes all the emotion out of it. Um, whether, whether you agree, disagree, whether you feel sorry for, don't feel sorry for, doesn't matter, it's a zoning issue. Um, it takes all the emotion out of it, so if, if Sam's looking into that, and if we could follow up, at least Dave's, part of his frustration was also with parking and then taking his um driveway there and the noise in and out all hours of the night, so we also have those nuisance laws, so I, I think there's multiple ways that we could address it.
Yeah, um, my only question that'd be maybe for Brigham would be is, are we allowed to enforce parking issues on private property? Or would that be it? On Dave to do that?
Well, I mean, if they're blocking his ingress and egress, then yes, you can.
Blocking, but I'm talking about parking. The use, I think you all said he's, they're parking in that driveway.
That would still be blocking.
Yep.
Oh.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think they're trespassing, uh, in addition to the traffic violation.
Okay. Alright.
Well, it's unusual to see eight or ten, twelve people on the front porch when it's nice out. I mean, just like a whole gang out there, so understand Dave's frustration.
Others?
Yeah, I can contribute if you want, since we're talking about parking already.
Go ahead.
Well, I've been meeting with a lot of the downtown business owners, and parking is continuing to become an issue for us as, you know, businesses start to expand and um, you know, develop downtown, and we really need to jump on this issue as soon as possible. They've asked, I don't know if you has looked at the old parking ordinance, but it's, it's very outdated. Um, I mean, it's talking about meters and everything else in it. I mean, it really just needs, you know, amended or repealed or whatever, and the recommendation that we're coming up with right now at the moment is two-hour parking in zones um, downtown. And also, this is something that we have Joe Sokol and them working on, um, smart city parking system, like traffic monitor that, that we don't have to hire any additional personnel to monitor the traffic. It monitors license plates. It will send a bill automatically if we wanted to bill people, but my recommendation and their recommendation is we use an ordinance that has a violation more so. So if you're violating, maybe the first time you give a warning or however we want to set it up. Um, but long term, maybe it's like, well, after you violated X amount of times, you're gonna have to um, pay a fine ordinance, but there is a big need for some kind of control over the parking because of um, businesses are, you have a lot of employees downtown um, that are taking up a lot of the uh, parking for our businesses. I wanted to put that on your radar, and I think the first step we could take though is at least putting the two-hour parking in place downtown.
I uh, I agree with that. I would like to get with uh, Kevin and kind of look over some things with the one-way streets with the diagonal parking on the side streets. I know that's been brought up quite a bit back in the fall, it seems like, um, but I'd like to maybe have some type of um, study or, you know, do some research on how, how many spots we could add if we went one way back and forth like Ashwin does.
There is the Kaiova Parking Study that's available on their website, and that's kind of what we're going based off of as well. There's a more temporary need to like, we need to, you know, start somewhere right now because it is, it is getting bad. Um, down Third Street, Second Street, Center Street, especially, those are the ones that are really um, you know, pretty full.
Excuse me, Sam. So you're saying that the employees of the businesses are taking up the parking spots for the clientele?
A lot of the time, then you also have um, second-floor tenants, um, everything else, everybody, you know, it's just we need just a two-hour parking zone from a certain time of the day, um, you know, to keep things open, keep things flowing at least.
I see. That sounds reasonable.
Yeah.
Well, I can tell you the two-hour parking will only create problems unless you do like the smart meters or smart town. I've never heard that, but I'm sure it's probably out there because back, what did it say? Back in the day, you know, we had meters in the whole city and had Carolyn Sheridan, she's the meter maid, and that job actually paid for itself. It paid her as a police officer, it paid for the vehicle she drove, and then there was a change of uh, administration, first thing they done was cut down all the meters. And they talked about putting up two-hour parking, which is excellent, except what you'll run into when you got all these two-hour parking. If you don't have some way to mark tires or something and record it, and then that's going to take an extra police officer or something. But the most number one call you'll get is, it'll be the people in the store, I'm talking to you, Sam, on this. They'll be calling the mayor's office saying these two cars been sitting out here all day, and we want you to come down and take care of it. They're violating the two-hour meter or the two-hour parking. And if you look into it, it'll be the store next door's employees, you know, that's doing that. I'll tell you the one, the one I think's really the most successful one, after we took the mirrors out, was Joe Ungers. Because Joe, he parks over in the city parking lot, all of his employees do. I think he probably fires somebody that worked for him and tried to park in front of his store.
I would agree.
But Joe does a wonderful job. But, but you know, it's, if you go to put signs up, you gotta have a plan on how to enforce them, because somebody is gonna call numerous times and tell you so-and-so's car's been parked here all day.
Yeah, and that would be up, I agree. I agree with you. Um, and that'd be up to us, you know, this system would be a universal system. If you want it to send warnings, it'll send warnings. If you want it to send violations, if you want to have a meter system installed there for people to enter their license plate and purchase so much time, you can do all that. So it, it kind of, it, it's going to be more flexible with like how we see it works. But yeah, when they call, it's gonna be, well, they're gonna get something in the mail. It's not like we can, you know, just go chalk talk, do anything. It's going to be something that they find out about at a later day. But it would eliminate us having to create any per, you know, full-time employees or anything dedicated to that. This is just a billing system that is automated through the traffic cameras that we would have and um, so, so we could go with two-hour parking, which is what the business community would like to see, or we could go with a metered system. Um, either one. I think we need to really find out if the billing that we get for sending out these violations is going to be cost efficient or not. If it's not, then we're probably gonna have to look at meters to do that kind of thing.
I have no problem at all with putting meters back up. I think it was a good system, but people complained, and within first two or three weeks that they took them all out, the uh, the courthouse in particular, they moved and into every parking space all the way around the block of the courthouse. And then when they went, built the new bank on the corner out there on Fifth and Park, oh, then that really, because that was a park, parking lot, and a lot of people used it for the courthouse. Now it's a bank and, you know, it's, it's terrible trying to get a parking spot if you need to run into courthouse, but my two cents were.
Okay. Do you have anything else for counsel?
I just need a short executive session for pending litigation with uh, counsel solicitor and Brett Thomas.
Okay, I've got two things. Um, all, all council members have a, have a envelope sitting in front of their their desks that's marked um, confidential first-class mail, and um, sorry to betray their confidence, but just so you know, you don't have to rush to pick it up. It's just a letter from a group called Citizen Serve and CitizenServe.com to offer serve for online processing of permitting, planning and zoning, code enforcement, licensing and inspection. Um, it's a cloud-based system, to summarize. There's even a little scan me code that you can use and pull it up on your phone if you choose to do so, but I wanted you to know that those were in here, um, just in case you wanted to stop and pick it up and, and peruse that information. Um, secondly, I got a packet in the mail with a letter and photos um, that I'll submit as part of the communications for our next agenda packet from Rayetta Waldo. And um, I have, I've actually scanned this document and sent it on to the solicitors today. I know they haven't had time to give it a thorough review because I sent it today, so um, but I'll, I'll summarize it by by basic, it's a three-page letter and a bunch of pictures. But the, the letter basically is addressing um, Rayetta's property on Zero or Ritchie Road, and it's thirty-four acres, I believe, of um, non-inhabited land that um, there is one parcelled land that her daughter and son-in-law um, now have that is in the city limits. The rest of it is actually considered in the city limits, and she is requesting that we detach or de-annex the rest of that property for multiple reasons that are outlined in this. Um, she mentions the Ohio Revised Code Chapter seven oh nine, and there's certain qualifications to de-annex, and there's those four qualifications, she meets all of them with that property. Um, and just a little background about that uh, property specifically, when she deeded that parcel to um, her daughter and son-in-law, she had a, a lot of issues with trying to get city services set up out there with particularly with sanitary. Um, at one point, not during your administration, Sam, but um, at one point was recommended even to um, do a septic because they were having so many issues trying to get um, sanitary out there to them. But as you're, well, you may not be aware, but um, but sanitary has, or I'm sorry, a septic system is not acceptable in the city limits. Also, that property has some coyotes and wildlife and plenty of deer, but you can't shoot a gun in the city limits either, so um, all that stuff is, is listed in here, and I, I had a brief conversation with Brigham, not an official opinion, but just a brief conversation about that, and because we, uh, my first thought was that probably needs to go to the annexation committee, even though it's de-annexation to get a recommendation. Chris, I don't know if you remember, but you're the chair of that committee, and so um, I asked just what process from the solicitors to be looking for that, that opinion. Um, because prior to the next meeting, we may have to call an annexation committee to meeting to give that a favorable or unfavorable recommendation. It also requires an ordinance that um, that I said I would sponsor to get it on the agenda to discuss. Um, I specifically asked Rayetta if there were any plans to um, to make any other dwellings out there. Um, and she said that she has actually um, for many years tried to think of utilization of that land, like make a subdivision, that kind of thing for that land, since it is within the city limits. But it would be cost prohibitive as far as the infrastructure, putting it out there, and the roads, putting it out there, the amount of lots that, that she could get out of that. Um, so they don't plan on doing anything with that land other than leaving it rural, forested area. Um, if you've ever been out there, it is rural, uninhabited, forested area that really um, really shouldn't be in the city limits. Um, that's, that's just my opinion, but um, anyway, I wanted you all to know that that is um, gonna be part of our communications next time. I'll send that packet on to the rest of you all, but I didn't want to send it unprompted without any context. So, um, Sam, I see your hand up.
Yeah, on the first thing you, you brought up, we, we're actually implementing a uh, code enforcement software and stuff, just so everyone knows that we didn't ignore them, that we've been on that process for every year almost. But secondly, is this a hillside?
There's multiple hills on, it's actually two hills, valley.
Would the storm water from that hill contribute to our flows inside the city that come through on one forty-one?
It runs into a creek.
Yes.
I'll tell you that.
Yeah, there's a lot of runoff, I'm guessing, the storm water and that's coming from that property too. But I just.
Yes, it does. Hey Craig, I got a statement for that property.
Go ahead, Brett.
Um, the, the one parcel that you did mention does have, is tied to the city sewer and gets city water.
Yeah, and I um, I guess also, you know, there were numerous issues when they were putting that parcel where they're building on that parcel. Another one is that um, there's a fire hydrant there at the end of Or Ritchie Road, but it can't reach the entire property, and the water pressure wouldn't allow them to even put out a fire at the end of that property if um, if that, if that is the case, um, she's she had told me that Moose told her that they could only go up to five hundred feet with their, with their hoses, so they can't even reach the, the um, majority of that acreage. So if there was a fire, they, they wouldn't even be able to put it out um, with city services. So there's, there's a lot to consider. Um, but I, I wanted you all to be aware of it was dropped off to me, and I'll, I'll send it out to you all, and wanted you to have some context to go along with that.
You know, I worked with her I don't know, a couple of years ago when they were building that house for her daughter. And the sewer line, what, what they done back in the day, this, the sewer line, say you got a twelve-inch, and then as you go up this road, you know, another three hundred feet, it could went down to a ten-inch or an eight-inch. I don't know what the final size was, but that sewer line was right against the edge of her property, and it's in the city, and she wanted the sewer line from the house or building to tie into it. And it was a major deal because a lot of, we had sewer people looking at, and they're talking about, they don't know if that house would make the line overflow or flood or whatever. But we got all that worked out and they built the house, beautiful home, and they did tie in, they had to go through the creek and then tie into the end of the, it was actually, they came up and just dead-ended, and they had to tie into that dead end. It seemed like, and then the water, no issue at all because they had the fire plugs. But it was uh, it's quite an ordeal to get it, and you know, if, if you're thinking of putting another house or tip through there, which I, I talked to Red a couple of weeks ago and told her to get ahold of you, Craig. But you know, they probably would almost have, have to have a pump station or something if they're gonna get into the city sewer line, because there just wasn't hardly enough capacity left even for the one house.
Yeah, and, and also um, I failed to mention that the last part of the letter talks about um, how, how you request a de-annexation, and you can do that through the local city legislature via ordinance, which is what she's requesting us do. But that if um, if we reject that, that there is also um, the option to go through court and um, and she mentions the fourth, the four factors that that weigh in that decision and that she meets all of those criteria, so anyway, I'll, I'll let you all glance at that and um, and get an opinion from Brigham and Mac on the process that that needs to follow, but um, anyway, I just wanted you all to be aware that I did get that packet. That I will sponsor the legislation so we can talk about it, and we'll get a, get an opinion from the solicitors on the process that needs to follow. And just to remind Chris, because we never really talk about annexation, that you're the chair of that committee, so um, it may, may need one of those um, committee meetings to give that a recommendation.
If you do an ordinance on that, Craig, I'll, I'll get on there with you.
Okay. Thanks, Bob. The other audience participation. Moving on to communications, there are none, and um, just a reminder, Mayor, if you don't care to forward your letter about the Income Tax Review Board regarding Mark Dickis to Marta, or, or um, put it in this, the stack of legislation that she receives from tonight. I would appreciate it. Yeah. Reports are none, ordinances there are none. Resolution, if the clerk could please read Resolution twenty-one oh three, by title only.
Twenty twenty-one salary resolution established.
2021 Salary Resolution Establishing Salaries for Non-Union employees.
Bob?
Yeah, I'd like to make him, um, mention that, uh, he got favorable recommendations from, uh, from the finance committee. And I guess I could go ahead and make a motion that we pass, uh, Resolution 2103. Is this where we need to add John Devon, her name?
We can do that in miscellaneous, Bob.
Okay.
Chris?
We have a discussion?
Yeah, you second, first?
Second.
I'll second.
Yep. Discussion, go ahead.
Uh, yeah, I was just kinda, Craig, for one, I appreciate all the time because I, I know you spearheaded the resolution and get some press on all those numbers and everything else. So, uh, thank you for spending your time and, and working on that so diligently. Um, another thing, just, just, you know, kinda something that kinda, uh, irked me and, and it was disappointing that we had, um, some, um, uh, negative comments and negative negativity, um, from people that are involved in the, in the resolution. Um, the thing about it is I've been current career for, for over a decade and there've been times to where, you know, the insurance goes up and we don't get a raise. But you, you know, you work very hard on this and made sure that the, the increase was offset and nobody, you know, nobody was gonna be upset. Um, but I just, I, I don't understand the fact that somebody being upset about getting a raise. I just, that it, I, I can't comprehend the fact that somebody is upset about making more money. Um, now if it's, you know, obviously if it wasn't enough, then maybe, you know, maybe somebody should you know, work harder and, and show, you know, show supervisors that to work more or something, but, but you know, and to receive a pay increase and complain was really disappointing. And I thought about uh, voting no on this or, um, you know, voting no or, or trying to, um, amend this, but I, you know, I don't want to, you hold up the progress of, of other people that are deserving a raise, uh, giving a raise. And I don't want to hold up the progress on your resolution that you worked so hard on. So I am going to vote yes on it, but it's just disappointing to hear some, some concerns and complaints from, from the people.
Chris, other discussion? Roll call, please.
Larry?
Hi.
Hany?
Hi.
Harvey?
Hi.
Hi.
Fine.
Hi.
Hi.
Resolution 23 or 2103 passes. Next we have miscellaneous and, um, Chris, in finance, before you joined, we were talking about, um, the organizational meeting of December 1st, 2021, whenever, um, the new council is sworn in. And we go through the, um, we go through the positions that council appoints. We typically do that every two years during that organizational meeting unless some, someone's terminated or resigns or whatever. Um, but we were talking about how during that time, um, I've never seen it during my time on council, but, um, we need to add the civil service clerk to that, that organizational meeting and appoint the civil service clerk. I'll remind you of that, Chris, because for the organizational meeting, you'll need the setup of that. I'll remind you of that, but I just wanted to put that, um, seed in your head, just so you are aware. And I think Bob was gonna, just, none of us could remember council appointing the civil service clerk. So I think Bob was gonna take care of that here in miscellaneous in just a second. Um, but the opinion that we, that we got was that the civil service clerk really should be included in the salary resolution because it's paid by the city. It's appointed by the council and it's a non-union position. So Bob?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion that we add John Devon and, or appoint, uh, her as the civil service clerk. And add it to the, uh, to the salary resolution list.
Chris?
I guess, I guess with her salary or whatever.
I'll second Bob's motion.
Question? Roll call, please.
Larry?
Hi. Hi.
Hany?
Hi.
Harvey?
Hi.
Hawk?
Hi.
Fine?
Hi.
Ears?
Hi.
There miscellaneous?
Great.
So I saw Chris, I could see you, hang on. I saw Chris first because Nate, you weren't on screen.
I just, I didn't know if everybody got the email I sent with the quotes, um, about the leaf collection, uh, equipment. And, um, like I said, you know, that's just a quote. And if anybody knows that, that was the only person that I can find. If anybody knows any other companies or anything, please let me know and I'll, I'll contact them and, and, you know, try to get together from maybe the best prices we can find. So I just wanted to let you guys know that I did email that out to you. Um, and if you can ha, if you have any other companies that have anything to do with that kind of stuff, let me know, please.
Chris? Chris, um, I don't know if anyone else, but on my email, those quotes did not come through. You may want to send those again as an attachment.
Okay, will do.
Thank you. But thank you for the work on that. I know, I know what you go through getting those quotes and all that. So thanks for that.
I went from Georgia to Michigan to Canton and finally Louisville or Lexington. So yeah, I got to run around a little bit, but finally got some numbers.
What's called?
They are.
Did you, uh, did, did you ask Jeff, did you ask Jeff Townsend if he, uh, it seems like something that would be in his wheelhouse. Did, did you ask him if he had any suggestions on somebody that did that kind of thing?
No, I did not. But, um, now this, this company, I, I can't ask, I'll ask him. Um, but this company said they've worked with municipalities, you know, and, and they understood where we were along the river and things like that. They understood EPA mandates and things like that. So it sounded like they've worked with, you know, a lot of, you know, towns along the river that, that are looking for equipment like this. So they, they said they, they gathered up their uh, references from, from other municipalities and, and send that to us, um, if we would, you know, take any further action on this. So they're, they're willing to give us whatever information we need. It's just, I didn't know, um, how far you guys wanted to look into this.
Thanks, Chris. Nate?
Yes, uh, I just kinda wanted to have Marta make part of the minutes and, uh, John sent this email out earlier from Mike Burns from Baird. Uh, just his check in that we are, uh, in compliance with our bond covenants for the wastewater storm bond. So I don't know if you just make that part of the minutes. And then, uh, also I'd like to make a motion, go to executive session, uh, discuss litigation with, uh, Mayor Solicitor and Brett Thomas.
Can I?
No, actually, oh, I'm sorry.
Real quick?
Yeah.
All right. I want to make part of the minutes that Terry Smith gave that letter to Craig already and it should be on his desk. The income tax letter. I'm kidding about making a part of the minutes there.
Oh, yeah, no, I, I gave it, after I signed everything, I gave it back in that stack. So it's probably in the stack of Mike, Mike, did I hear you second?
You did.
Roll call, please.
Larry? Larry? Larry?
Hi.
Hany?
Hi.
Harvey?
Hi.
Hawk?
Hi.
Fine?
Hi.
Ears?
Hi.
Y'all for joining us this evening.